You guys, when we get a fourth, I'll stop and we'll call roll because we'll have a quorum. But everybody knows it's supposed to start at 4:30 and that's after that. So we're going to go ahead and get started. And I'm not sure which one of you wants to speak first, but the microphone is yours as to however you want to present.
Address 126 Haynes Avenue here in Waterloo. Just an update, I think is what we're after today. John and I are residential development partners. We've taken a stance on this of we're moving ahead with the focus, each one of us taking a focus piece of the project.
Jim, let me stop you now, please. Okay. We have a quorum, so Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole here, Mr. Getty, Mr. Jones, Mr. Greenwood, Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Walper, Mr. Hurt.
Motion for the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. That is passes and we are here, as Jim has kind of started, we have asked John and Jim to come in and just give us an update on the housing project. You guys have access to several different places and you're doing some great things in town and some places that hasn't seen development in for quite some time. So we're excited about it, but we'd like to know just a little bit more about what you're doing, Jim. So please continue. Thank you.
Yep. Going around right now is a plan set for some of the infrastructure improvements for the Williston Field site. Each site kind of is moving on their own pace and their own schedule. Each one of them has a different hurdles, I guess you'd have to say, to get through. We did go, I can give you a little bit of update on part of Baltimore Field and Williston Field, and then I think John can give you an update on the Lafayette School site and the Burton site. But the Williston Field site, we did go through the process of expanding the enterprise zone. We went through the process with the Enterprise Zone Commission, with the council. We sent that information to the state. The state did approve the enterprise zone expansion. We turned in an application for the five lots on Williston Field for an enterprise zone housing project, and that was approved. And we did receive back the email from the state, which I have nice conveniently taped to my wall, so I do not lose that one. So that has been approved by the state as an enterprise zone housing area. After we received that, we finished up the plans for the infrastructure improvements. And then the only thing we're really waiting for on the Williston Field site is it's still in the recognized floodplain area. The city engineering department has been working with AECOM to address that. I have seen the map that shows that the Williston Field site is out of what they're proposing to be the revised mapping for that area. So we're just waiting for that designation to be lifted off of that site. We decided to wait for just a couple of months here. We're told that as long as the government shutdown doesn't continue and that department remains closed, that by the end of this year, we should have a response that that should be lifted. And then that Williston Field site would no longer be in the floodplain. The benefit to us is that it, once it is lifted, we can build basements at that site. Right now, we cannot build basements. And homes, realistically, this is Iowa, people like to have basements, so they are more valuable, higher tax rate, if you can build the basements in the homes. So the site is ready to go, the infrastructure improvement plans are ready to go. Now it's just a matter of seeing if we can get that flood designation taken off the site. The second one is Baltimore Field. I'm currently working on a set of plans just similar to that for some of the improvements on Baltimore Field. There isn't quite as extensive infrastructure on the Baltimore Field site, at least the first eight lots on the Vermont Street side. The only thing that's really holding us back on the Baltimore Field site is we're currently working with Noel Anderson, and we're trying to determine if that site can also be within the enterprise zone. We're in the appraisal process, and once the appraisals come back, then we will know. If it's a yes, that's great. If it's a no, you know, we can move ahead after that time period. But we have to, it's prudent for us to wait and find out if that is possible. So that's kind of what's holding us up right now on the Baltimore Field site. Other than that, plans are going well. There has been interest in the Baltimore Field site. We've been asked to open it up, and we're kind of like, not quite yet. So that's kind of where we're at on both those sites. I can let John talk a little bit about Lafayette School.
John, or Jim, excuse me. And I'll let counsel also, but I mean, my question is, I appreciate you bringing the plans for the infrastructure. What I was hoping to see is what are the houses going to look like? Where are the garage? What's the style? How many are you going to put on there? What's it going to look like? Is it compatible with the rest of the neighborhood?
Yes.
And, you know, that's, I was, maybe we didn't convey, or I didn't convey, what we were looking for, but you know, what's your project going to look like?
Well, basically, on the Williston Field site, they are going to be, we are promoting either one and a half story or two-story homes, not the ranch-style homes. The surrounding site is one and a half or two stories. They're still in the same square footage that we've talked about since the beginning. Ranch-style homes would be 1,100 square feet, two-car attached garages. One and a half stories, a little bit smaller, they're 900 square feet in the first floor, and then the remainder is made up in the upper floors. So that's really what we've stated since the beginning, we're heading for those square footages. And two-car attached garages and full basements.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions, Jim?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Let me just ask one more then, quickly, then we'll give it to John. Jim, this is kind of the first I've heard about the floodplain issue, that you can't build and put a basement in there until this floodplain mapping issue. We're apt to be months away from hearing back from FEMA. Is that not correct?
That's...
Craig, or do you, I mean, it's an engineering question, but when we're waiting on FEMA...
Actually, that's been on the table since the beginning. So we've been waiting already, you know, six, seven months, but we weren't ready at this point to build homes. But since the 2011 maps were approved for that area, it pulled a lot of area above that underground arch into the floodplain.
I knew that, I just didn't know that we couldn't build houses with no basements in there.
Well, and I talked to Craig, Clark, the building official, and it is true, right now, we, as long as it's a floodplain, you can't build basements. Craig, am I correct in saying that? We can build, we can build storm shelters up to 200 square feet, and that does not require a ingress, egress window from those structures. So we could build, you know, I personally don't want to build anything that doesn't have a storm shelter. So we were promoting the fact that we would at least be able to do that. But with us being so close to getting a resolution on the floodplain issue, two or three more months isn't going to hurt, especially going into the winter months.
Noel, does this affect our development agreement timeline at all? If, I think two or three months is being very optimistic to get an answer from FEMA.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, and I mean, go backwards for a second, you can build on the site. You'd have to either flood-proof the structures, or you can actually build on the site and elevate them up one foot above the 100-year floodplain. Granted, this is a strange floodplain with a shallow flooding area, and get a letter of map revision afterwards. I think once we saw the map showing this favorably being taken back out under the full bigger study, it made better sense to go ahead and wait for that to be approved. At this point, you know, if we have to wait three months, we're still in the same, we're still in the same construction season, and sort of this fall, we're in the spring construction season. So I think we're still in good shape with the development agreement at this point.
Anybody else have questions, or Jim, right now?
Mr. Mayor, and I know this for Noel or who, but I mean, so would we have any reason to think three months, anything will be different with FEMA? Where does that timeframe come from?
It probably depends on how long the federal government shut down. Obviously, they were reviewing ours. The last bit of information shows from the FEMA office that they'd requested more information from AECOM. AECOM had turned that back into them, and that they were going to respond within 90 days from that last notice. However, with the shutdown, obviously, that's going to impact that. So depending upon how long they're shut down, I would think we would have the answer back from FEMA by the spring.
Have we ever, I just seem to hear FEMA mentioned a lot, whether it's this, whether it's this downtown dyke thing that we've talked about, whether it's the Sixth Street corridor, the place, or, I mean, have we had people from FEMA out here to maybe just kind of show them how confused they are?
We have had FEMA representatives here in the past, going through this mapping study, yes.
We have had representatives from FEMA here.
Yes, they have been here.
And we've shown them where the dykes are.
Correct.
And we've shown them the paperwork for the pumps.
Correct.
And they still come up with this stuff.
Sometimes it's confusing to us, too.
Thank you.
Let's let John have the microphone, Jim. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Roof, 1507 Commercial. 232-4663 is the number. I can give you an update on what we're doing, on all the locations that you have approved. The 12 lots I have on Baltimore, the six on Indiana, the seven on East 7th, and, or the, yeah, the seven on East 7th and Lafayette. We've even done engineering for all of the lots that you haven't passed to us yet, which is the Lafayette School site and the Tiller Park. But all the engineering for those locations have been completed, including the main sewer water infrastructure and storm drains for those lots that we have. And we have contracted with Aspro, and as of today, they are prepared to put infrastructure in two sites. I'll cover that a little bit later when we get to Lafayette School. We've made signs for all of those lots. And the only thing that we're waiting on with Baltimore Field is that enterprise zone status, because in order to build there, put that kind of infrastructure in, and allocate that over the lots, you're going to have to have some kind of incentive to get, if you're going to build a home, 145,000 or thereabouts. Madison and Monroe, the seven lots over there have been pinned, we're ready to go, and you'll see the signs on those by next week. I'd like to talk a little bit about Lafayette, and then I'm going to pass out some pictures so you can see what we're anticipating building. The other day, I got a call from Ron Walper and Noel Anderson, the two of them came over to see me, to discuss Ron's interest in building commercial, a commercial development on the Lafayette School, and it would take the Indiana lots as well. And I informed them that we've already had it engineered, we're ready to put in the infrastructure, and we've spent some considerable money to get to that point. And I guess I'm assuming you're going to discuss that tonight, the council will probably take that up. We've been asked if we would give them 60 days to try to find a commitment for commercial, and we're prepared to do whatever they want commercially as well as residentially. But I just want you to know that everything is ready to go. And we have also, for your information, finished all of round two and round four for community development over on West Parker. If you haven't been over there in a while, go over there, it's really changed. We started out having homes appraised at 135. The last home we had appraised over there came in at 150. So we know that lifting the neighborhood up has made a big difference. We've also finished the three homes for community development here on Lafayette. I'm going to now jump a little bit to another area that I'm involved in, which is outside of these school lots, and that's the downtown homes. We worked with Vanderwall and Invision to come up with the planning for the style, and we've received approval of the PMT group as of September. So we proceeded, and for the downtown homes, what we are doing is we're going to staff a downtown office. It'll be on East Fourth Street, and in that office, we'll have the pictures of what we're planning on building. These are homes that can be owned in the downtown area, and we think that that will give everyone a chance to see what things are going to look like downtown when it comes to new construction. We are holding several focus groups so that we can have people come in, tell us what their thoughts are on styles and finishes and dollar amounts and that type of thing. And I have to say, it's, we're able to do this downtown location because of JSA, and everyone has something at stake down there, regardless of what type of housing we have in the downtown area, which is where we're going, I think, long-term. And we will then, we will then show you pictures of what we're going to be doing in all of these areas, so you'll have an idea where we are. But to date, we have built over 50 homes in Waterloo alone, and right as of this moment, we have 60 homes on the boards, which include those homes that would go on the lots that were needed to us, and the others are market-rate lots that we are building within the city of Waterloo. Our total focus, which was the greater Cedar Valley and Cedar Falls in Waterloo, and now it's going to be specifically Waterloo, because we think that there's a real need for affordable housing in Waterloo. So at this point, Carrie, would you hand out the pictures of what we're doing? You'll see the signs that we're doing for Baltimore Field, which is called Hawthorne Estates. We'll show you what's planned for Indiana, should that remain residential, that's called Linden Place. And then over on, at Highland, on Madison and Monroe, they're called Highlands Ranches. And then we have three or four pictures that have been approved and focused on for the downtown townhomes, which are brick and stone, and they'll have engineered flooring, and they'll have all the things that we think the demographic, which is much younger than, well, than most of you sitting on the dais. But, Steve, you can smile at that.
You were excluding Carolyn, I'm sure.
I was, yeah, that's why she laughed.
Sure of that, yes.
Well, the youngster's right here.
Oh, that's right, I keep thinking he's in the, yeah. He's not here.
The hair deceives you, that can happen. I'd like to ask you if you have any questions.
John, are you keeping an account of, are these first-time home buyers that are buying these homes, or are these people who have homes that are possibly moving into a newer home? Are you keeping track of who's buying them?
Yeah, we keep track of that very closely because of the incentive packages that we are offering, and we believe that there will be veterans, we believe there will not be all first-time home buyers. First-time home buyers can access another $8,000 or $9,000 worth of incentive, but not like the programs that you had before this. And we might even be touching on some of the people that want to get out of a big house and move into something smaller. We also have new residents. Out of the 60 homes that we're planning on building, 20% of those are either under contract or we have verbal commitments. So we hope to have at least 10 homes on foundations by the first or second week in But you have to keep track of that, to answer your question, Ron, because otherwise, you don't know, you don't know who you're serving, and what their needs are.
Many elderly, would you say any elderly are...
I would say that elderly are slow to come to this type of program, but...
You have to be really careful using that word.
Retired.
No, because, you know, people who are 75 don't think they're elderly.
No, it's a state of mind, Carolyn, you know that.
It's Iowa.
It's getting worse. John, I love your brownstones, I love those things for downtown, those are just very cool.
We think they'll be nice, yeah, and they'll all have attached garages and private patios or decks and...
Very cool.
If you would like, I can get you copies of those things, but those are, I'll have to take those back tonight, if that's all right with you.
You guys got any more questions, Steve?
So, John, affordable home, we're not talking about income-assisted, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so none of these would be income-assisted?
No, but there are other incentives out there that will help a lot of people, veterans and first-time home buyers and that type of thing.
The downtown buildings that you're showing here, I mean, do we have some lots in mind for those?
We do.
Is that, is that public knowledge, or are we not talking about it yet?
Well, you've passed it, yeah. You approved one, we're trying to get the development agreement on the other, so...
Tell him about the one that's approved, please.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, we've approved the one at Lafayette and Seventh Street, which would be right half a block away from the five houses that John built, and across Lafayette, from the three houses that John built for community development.
Okay, so not any right downtown? That's really, I guess, what I was wondering about. I mean, that's right near downtown, but that is a, that's a resolution.
Correct, they're just on the fringe of downtown. John's design, though, actually allows him to go on a standard 120-by-60-foot-wide lot, so they're pretty compatible to go into other infill sites, if we can get those set up.
It's been a challenge, Steve, to come up with the, because of the size of the lots, but, you know, with Mike Neri and the work he did down there, I mean, we will complement that and face it towards the downtown, so people can actually walk to all the amenities. And that's what our focus groups will tell us about, why would you want to live downtown? What do you want to be close to? What kind of price do you want to pay and that kind of thing, so...
David, or Karen?
Thank you.
John, I have a question, if it's, it's been asking here before without you and Jim present, but I think it's, I think it should be asked again. Your relationship, I mean, Jim was talking about doing Baltimore and Williston, you've talked about doing Baltimore and Williston, but are you still partners in this? Or do you have, what's the relationship?
It's all going through RDP, Mayor, but it's, Jim has his lots that he's developing, and I have mine.
Okay.
We're not collectively developing anything together any longer.
Okay, very good. Anything further?
Motion for adjournment, I get it.
Just a comment, thank you both for what you're doing. I mean, you guys are doing stuff that we've been needing here for a long time, so that much appreciated. All in favor, in return?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, guys. Greetings, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this Monday, October 14th, regularly scheduled meeting in the Waterloo City Council. We have kind of a thin crowd in chambers tonight, and we have a thin, he is coming? Oh, good. We have one more councilperson coming, but it is 5:30, and we're going to go ahead and get started. So Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole here, Mr. Getty, Mr. Jones, Mr. Greenwood, Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Walper, Mr. Hurt. Thank you.
You don't look like Mr. Hurt.
Very good, thank you, Madam Clerk. If you would all join me, please, in standing for just a moment of silent reflection or Thank you very much. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by our city attorney, Mr. Jim Walsh, and I think Jim's got a couple of words for us prior to the pledge tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With your permission, I'd like to break the little routine here by telling people a little bit about the Pledge of Allegiance. I know that most people are very familiar with the words themselves, but the pledge itself was developed as an expression of loyalty to the federal flag and the Republic of the United States of America. It was composed by Francis Bellamy in 1892, and was adopted by Congress as a pledge in 1942. The pledge has been amended small ways, a few times, but the only substantive amendment was the addition of "under God," and that was done in 1954 in the Eisenhower administration. So would you all please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, you may be seated, and thank you, Mr. Walsh. When Jim asked me today if he could do that, and I said absolutely, but why, he says, because we just need to know why we say the Pledge of Allegiance. So thank you, Mr. Walsh, that's a great kid there.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Walper?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, and also the minutes of April 7th, 2013 regular session as proposed. Did I say, you said April? I said April?
You did say April.
October.
I think we knew what you meant, but for the record, it's October, not April.
I'll second that motion.
Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns regarding either the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a proclamation tonight. I have Latanya Graves, is it Latanya, or is it, who is coming up? Melvina, is it, oh, no, there's Latanya, I didn't see you. Come on up, both of you, please. Welcome. How are you tonight? Melvina, how are you? Why don't you get over here, so I can be the thorn between two roses here. We have a proclamation tonight, ladies and gentlemen, and it's always my honor to be able to do this every year for the NAACP annual banquet. Tonight, we are proclaiming, "We shall not be moved." Whereas the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People is the nation's oldest and largest civil rights organization, and whereas its half-million adult and youth members throughout the United States and the world are the premier advocates for civil rights in their communities, conducting voter registration drives and monitoring equal opportunity in the public and private sectors. And whereas the Black Hawk County branch of the National Association for Advancement of Colored People was chartered in 1921, and will on Saturday, October 19th, 2013, hold its annual NAACP Freedom Fund Dinner in Waterloo, Iowa. And whereas the theme for this year's event is, "We shall not be moved." Now, therefore, I, Buck Clark, Mayor of the I, Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim October nineteenth, twenty thirteen, "We shall not be moved" day in Waterloo and recognize the NAACP for their role to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of minority groups, citizens, and to eliminate race prejudice. A very, very worthy cause. Melvina, thank you, and Latonya, thank you, and I'm gonna give one of you a microphone. You have to say something here, so... Who would like to do that? Latonya, you got pointed to.
Okay. Um, as you heard, the banquet is Saturday, and it will be held at the aisle, and tickets are fifty dollars, so if you would like to attend, you can contact myself, and you have until Wednesday.
Very good. Thank you, Latonya, and thank you, guys, for what you do, both of you. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Alrighty, and we have a recognition tonight for the October Team Member of the Month, who is Andy Bedard, and I don't see Andy here tonight, but Andy works in our waste treatment facility, and when he was nominated by his peers, uh, what they said about Andy was just that he's a team player. He's always there early, he stays late, he's always got a smile, he's always ready to help anybody out at any time, and he's just a real asset to that particular division of our city, uh, just another great employee of the City of Waterloo. So, Andy, if you're out there watching, and I hope you are, congratulations on being named October's Team Member of the Month. And I will tell Latonya, uh, that you guys don't have to stay, you're welcome to if you'd like, but Latonya and Melvina, we, we will not be offended if you choose not to get your civics lesson for the night and stay for the rest of the meeting. So, it's your choice. Very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welper?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, that's one, A through B sixteen, and within that will be the bills payment by Ms. Cole.
The bills this week are two million eight-hundred-and-forty-three thousand nine-hundred-and-eleven dollars and eighty-eight cents, two comma eight-four-three comma nine-one-one point eight-eight.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we did have some board and commissions appointments.
We did. Uh, I didn't, don't, thank you, David. Crystal Buzza has been a, a new appointment to the Cultural and Arts Commission with an expiration date of March first, twenty sixteen, and I don't see Crystal here, and Brian Quirk is being reappointed to the Operation Threshold Board of Directors. So, uh, thank you, David, for pointing that out, and as I always say, our, our boards and commissions are incredibly important to the city. People volunteer of their time and of their talents and of their efforts, so when folks step up to those boards and commissions and, and give of those assets, we greatly appreciate it. So, Crystal and Brian, thank you very much. Uh, without further questions, anyone's... Oh, we have a new employee tonight. I'm slipping. Steve, you're, you're slipping, because you're not pulling this out to me.
David beat me up. He got me out of my seat.
We have a new employee, which I always like to point out. Gary Wentz is going to be a new equipment operator one for the street department. Mark, is Gary here? Gary Wentz, are you here? He is not, so Gary, welcome on board to the Waterloo, uh, City of Waterloo. Uh, you're gonna be operating some of our equipment, and welcome on board. I hope you're here for a long time. So, with all of that said, uh, it's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Motion carries. It's a short roll tonight. Item number two, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number two, I'd like to make a motion, receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the purchase of one two thousand fourteen automated side loader garbage truck for the sanitation department.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file to this item?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the city buying a garbage truck a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I would ask, Larry, is that the same time that we have now that picks it up and dumps it in? Okay, fine. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion and to close the hearing and, uh, file the oral comments.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, does anyone else have any comments, questions regarding this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid document, et cetera.
Second.
And it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Uh, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and receive and file and instruct the city clerk to open and read bids and refer to Public Works Director for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please? Uh, we have, I believe, two, two bids tonight for the garbage truck with an estimate of two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars.
The first bid is from Cedar Rapids Truck Center of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. And the total bid is for two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand nine-hundred-and-thirty dollars, two-one-seven comma nine-three-zero point zero-zero. And the second bid is from Twin Bridges Truck City of Davenport, Iowa. And their bid is for two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand two-hundred-and-forty-four dollars, two-two-five comma two-four-four point zero-zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Mark, please.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Item number three is the, I'll make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing for the purchase of one two thousand fourteen triple combination pumper fire truck.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any objections to this item?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against us buying a new fire truck a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Getty?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
What do we do with the old fire truck?
Mr., uh, Pat, are you here, please? What do we do with the old fire truck?
Pat Treloar, Chief Fire Services, the truck that we're gonna be replacing will be put into reserve status, and, um, the plan is to replace engine three oh five.
Thanks, Pat. Uh, you know, we, we really, I hate to add to the length of the meeting, but we can't do this without having a comment from what Chief Treloar found Saturday night, one of our old ambulances within the parking lot of the U and I Panther football game being used as a tailgate vehicle, and Pat, Pat recognized the vehicle right off the bat, and it still had the red and the stripes, didn't have the patches, but, uh, so, all kinds of things get used for our... Any further comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Getty?
Make a motion, adopt a resolution confirming approval of the specification and bid document.
Second.
It's a, uh, roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Getty?
Make a motion, adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to open and read bids and refer to the Chief of Fire Services for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We have three bids on this tonight. Uh, we have an estimate of four-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars for this fire truck. Madam Clerk, please.
The first bid is from Feld Fire of Carroll, Iowa. And they didn't bid.
Okay.
Interesting.
We have some big bids.
Fire trucks are big.
They are.
They get their trucks in there.
Toy trucks.
Yeah, trucks in there.
Like Christmas.
And they wrap it and wrap it.
Maybe there's T-shirts for everybody in there.
This one's part of the secret.
Sealed bid.
Trucks, little trucks for the kids.
Oh, look at that binder. That's nice.
How about an executive summary?
And the base bid is five-hundred-and-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars, five-zero-eight comma five-eight-four point zero-zero.
Five-zero-eight comma what?
Five-eight-four point zero-zero.
And which was, this was from Reliant or Custom?
This one was Reliant.
Thank you.
Should have a cup holder?
Custom. The next bid is from Custom Fire Apparatus Inc. of Osceola.
Oh, another nice one.
I don't think you have that big anymore.
Very nice.
Yeah.
And their bid is for five-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand six-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars, five-two-eight comma six-seven-seven point zero-zero.
Very good. Pat, please, if you would get those and, uh, analyze them and report back to us. Thank you, sir, very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welper, four, five, and six, please.
Okay. Uh, number four is a resolution approving the recommendation of award of contract to KWS Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in the amount of thirty-nine thousand seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the fiber optic connection, city network to Sports Plex Building, and authorize Mayor to execute said document. Number five is a resolution approving the recommendation of award of contract to Astro Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of twenty-four thousand six-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and approving the contract bonds and certificates of insurance for the fiscal year twenty-fourteen Sullivan Park Basketball Court Project, and authorize Mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number six is a resolution approving recommendation award of contract to Young Plumbing and Heating Company of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of four-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand eight-hundred dollars, and approving the contract bonds and certificates of insurance for the twenty-thirteen Young Arena dehumidification project, and authorize Mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding four, five, or six? Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Motion's carry, please. Seven, eight, and nine?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number seven is adopting a resolution approving a recommendation of award bid to rally appraisal services of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, in the amount of two thousand dollars for the appraisal of two-twenty-two Walnut Street, also known as the House of Hope, located near the intersection of East Second Street and Walnut Street. Item eight is adopting a resolution approving a recommendation award of bid to rally appraisal services of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, in the amount of one thousand two hundred dollars for the appraisal of parcel number eight-nine-one-three dash two-four dash three-oh-eight dash zero-two-five, owned by Larson Management LLC, located at the intersection of East Second Street and Walnut Street. And item number nine is a motion approving change order number one for a net increase of nineteen thousand two-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and twenty cents for work performed by Astro Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, for rehabilitation of Taxiway E. at the Waterloo Regional Airport.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding seven, eight, or nine?
Mr. Mayor, what did they do on number nine? Didn't we have a, wasn't there a big nineteen or twenty-thousand-dollar one last week for that airport runway two?
That's the same one.
Is this the same one?
We talked about it Thursday morning. Uh, I don't remember exactly what it was.
This one is, there's one increase and two decreases, and this is the difference between the two, um...
Those additional areas that they worked on?
Yeah, it's, it's just additional...
Additional PCC pavement patching on Taxiway E.
That's what's additional.
It's, it's, so they, they did additional patching, Harold, and beyond that, I, I can't tell you. Uh, it's, again, while it's everybody's money, it is FAA money, it's grant money that we're, is being used to pay for it.
Thank you.
You bet. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Motion's carry. Next three, ten, eleven, twelve, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
I'm over, approve change order number two for a net increase of one-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand one-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars and fifty-six cents for work performed by Stickford Construction Corp., Inc. of Hudson, for the FY twenty-thirteen Blowers Creek Qnet repairs, contract number eight-four-five. Eleven is a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work performed by Stickford Construction Corporation, Inc. of Hudson, at a total cost of four-hundred-and-one thousand seven-hundred-and-eleven dollars and sixty cents in conjunction with the same project. Twelve is a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work performed by Benton Sand and Gravel, Inc. of Cedar Falls, at a total cost of two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand six-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars and three cents in conjunction with FY twenty-twelve Geraldine Road Extension Contract Number eight-two-one, and receive and file two-year maintenance bond.
Second.
Very good. Thank you. Counsel, uh, are there questions or comments regarding ten, eleven, or twelve, counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
That's a pretty, um, I, this would, I guess be for engineering on the, um, cha- that's a big change order. Could you give us a little bit on number ten?
Thanks, Ms. Cole.
Eric Thorson, City Engineer, um, this is the actual increased-decreased change order at the end of the project, so there were a number of, uh, contract line items that were adjusted, but the large share of that was due to the fact that the contractor had constructed a lot of the Qnet, and then we had that real wain- rainy spring, and a lot of it got undermined, so we had to, uh, put some concrete underneath that to, uh, keep that, so we didn't lose it. And then we also decided to add some additional slope protection out there to hopefully keep it from happening again, so that's kind of what happened with that. We got caught by some really bad weather and, um, had to make some changes and some repairs that we didn't anticipate.
Thank you, sir.
And, and just for counsel's, uh, information, I've, uh, had a conversation with Mr. Thorson following this, because that, that is a large change order, and it caught me off, a little bit off guard also, so, uh, I think we, we haven't put it in the form of, uh, official, but at least unofficially, uh, engineering will, um, apprise counsel in the future. If there's a change order increase that's going to exceed twenty thousand dollars, you will apprise counsel. You'll come to counsel first. Eric, is, am I stating that right and, uh, and get preapproval rather than postapproval?
Hi, Eric Thorson, City Engineer. Um, actually, what we'll do is, uh, because the City Engineer is allowed to approve change orders up to twenty thousand dollars, we'll use that as a threshold for not only change orders, but also if we're noticing that some line item in a contract is going to be increased by more than that, then we'll bring that back to counsel. Now, we don't always know the exact numbers until the job is down to the end, but if we're seeing a line item in a contract begin to exceed more than twenty thousand above what was in the original contract, we'll also bring that back to counsel, probably in a, maybe a letter form or something, try to give you some explanation and an update on what's going on there.
Thanks, Mr. Thorson. Further questions regarding ten, eleven, or twelve? Roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Motion's carry. Let's do thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. Uh, Mr. Getty?
Item thirteen is a resolution approving cooperative surface repairs force account agreement with Chicago Central and Pacific Railroad Company for the Nevada Street Railroad Crossing, and authorize the mayor to execute the said document. Item fourteen is a resolution approving notice of discontinuation from NPDES coverage under general permit two to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources in the, in conjunction with the FY two thousand and twelve Burns Park Drainage Improvements Phase One and Phase Two, contract number eight-two-two, and authorize the mayor to execute said document. And item fifteen is a resolution approving, uh, approving notice of discontinuation of the NPDES coverage under general permit two for the Iowa Department of Natural Resources in conjunction with the FY twenty-thirteen Blowers Creek Qnet repairs, contract number eight-four-five. in conjunction with the FY 2013 Blowers Creek QNet repairs, contract number eight four five, and authorize the mayor to execute the said document.
Second.
I move that these be approved.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Harold, Carol, and, uh, counsel, do you have any questions regarding the three? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion's carry. Sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item sixteen, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the housing enterprise zone agreement number fourteen dash H E Z dash zero one five for GMJ Two Industries LLC of Waterloo, Iowa, for the construction of five homes located at the former Williston Field within the enterprise zone, and authorize mayor to execute said document. Item seventeen is adopting a resolution approving the fiscal year 2014 and 2015 economic development grant to the Greater Cedar Valley Alliance for work towards economic development in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars base amount, with fifty-six thousand, five hundred dollars in potential incentive funds, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute any necessary documents. And item number eighteen is adopting a resolution approving amended and restated development agreement with the Cedar Valley Tech Work, Tech Works, Inc., and FDP WTC LLC by breaking the improvements in the city's bond issuance commitments into two pieces, so the West Campus site improvements can proceed, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding either of those three, sixteen, seventeen, or eighteen?
Mr. Mayor, last week, we were asked about the five homes, and it would be, I think it'd be good if we asked John to come up and explain how many square feet, how big the lots are, and so forth for those.
Okay. Uh, John, are those yours, or are those Jim? Those are Jimmy's, aren't they? That's right. Uh, Mr. Getty, that GMJ Two is Jimmy Ellis, so.
I'm sorry, I thought they were.
That's, that's, that's not John, so.
Okay.
Uh, we will have some stuff for Mr. Roof here in a bit, but that one is not, and Mr. Ellis isn't here to explain.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so there's a roll call vote on sixteen, seventeen, or eighteen? And eighteen. Uh, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, counsel. Let's, if you could indulge me, please, I'm quite sure there's going to be conversation on item number twenty-one, so if someone would take nineteen, twenty, and twenty-two, we can do those three, and then we'll come back and do twenty-one.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
I move we adopt a resolution approving joint representation agreement with Hall and Associates of Washington, DC, in an amount not to exceed two thousand dollars to address the state of Iowa nutrient reduction strategy, and authorize mayor to execute said document. Twenty is a resolution setting the date of hearing as October twenty-eighth to approve the request of the Bosnian Islamic Association of Waterloo for a site plan amendment to the R4RP Plan Multiple Family Residence District to allow for the development of a new mosque, cemetery, and sports and recreational complex generally located on fifteen point two-six acres south of Marigold Drive and north of Memory Lane, and instruct city clerk to publish notice. And twenty-two is a resolution approving an agreement with Ament Inc. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, for additional design services for the FY 2014 2672 and 2736 Logan Avenue Sanitary Services Contract Number Eight Six One, and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Second.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Cole. Uh, counsel, do you have any questions on those three? Any of those three? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, counsel. Now, if we could just jump back one, and someone would take item twenty-one, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welper.
Twenty-one is a resolution setting the date of hearing as October twenty-eighth, 2013, to approve the request of Kesson Associates on behalf of Blackhawk Contracting and Development of Waterloo, Iowa, for a site plan amendment to the R1RP Planned One and Two Family Residence District to allow for the construction of fourteen new single-family homes located at the former Lafayette School Site, and instruct the city clerk to publish notice. Second.
Very good. Uh, comments, please, on item number twenty-one?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welper?
Uh, per our conversation Noel Anderson and I had with John Roof last Friday, we came to an agreement that we would like to table this for sixty days to investigate what interest there may be to have that as a commercial property. So, John has agreed to a sixty-day tabling of that.
Okay. Are there further comments regard, is, is that in the form of a motion, or would you, would you make it in the form of a motion if you so choose, Mr. Welper?
I asked to table that, yes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to table, item number twenty-one for sixty days. Are there further comments or questions? Uh, Mr. Roof is in the audience, he can either make a statement or answer questions.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Roof, fifteen oh seven, commercial, two three two four six six three. At our work session tonight, we talked about this. I just want you to understand that the property has been deeded to us. We have done all of the engineering, we have two buyers, and the infrastructure is ready to proceed. Uh, I know this has been a consideration for some time, and when we talked Friday, I said I wouldn't do anything for sixty days. I mean, I wouldn't be acting on it for sixty days, uh, but realize that this thing will have to come back because you've already given me ownership to the property, so. That's, and that's purely a council decision. I'm not here to talk about your decision. I'm simply making it clear what, what's at stake here, and we'll, uh, we'll abide by your, your decision.
Counsel, do you have any questions of Mr. Roof? Mr. Schmidt?
Just a quick question. John, so you're saying you, you've got two sales, you're talking about you have two of the parcels sold, or what?
Uh, yeah, we have two buyers, they're not signed, but two buyers interested in living there. Uh, we've done all the engineering, we are prepared to run sewer water and storm for ten homes, and that would have taken place probably within the month. So, uh, if you're going to do this for sixty days, uh, there should be some plan after that sixty days, how you're going to deal with that. Now, you may not deal with that tonight, but that is something you have to consider.
Further, counsel? Further questions or comments?
I guess I would just like to hear affirmation from either Mr. Anderson or Mr. Walsh, that there's no complications to this motion.
It's up to the council to table the matter, if you wish. At this point, it would be very difficult to reverse this arrangement, as Mr. Roof has just indicated, it's already down the road a bit, so it'd have to be something that was voluntary with him, really, if you want to change the use of the land at this point.
Got you.
Mr. Anderson, do you have comments or to add to that?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, obviously, we've entered into an agreement with Mr. Roof to develop the site. Uh, that was, we had the meeting with him, uh, last week to kind of talk about the, the potential of this as a commercial site. I think, uh, all the parties, the city and Mr. Roof, have agreed that, uh, we'll look at this and try to find out if there really is some commercial interest in there. Obviously, we all want to see what's best for the community, what's best for the, this portion of the city and for development reasons, and if we do move ahead in a different direction than previously agreed to, um, we'd have to work with Mr. Roof on, on making those amends and, and moving ahead altogether.
Okay, there is a motion and a second to table for sixty days. Uh, let's do a roll, well, there is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. Uh, motion is made and seconded to table this for sixty days. Uh, I'm sure Mr. Anderson and, and Mr. Welper will work to, they do their due diligence to see if we can get something commercial in there, and I know, you know, what we don't want to overlook in this process is all of the good work that Mr. Roof has done within Phil Lots all over the city, and he's, he's, he's really kind of started that ball rolling where it wasn't rolling at all before, so we want to make sure that we recognize Mr. Roof for that, and, and I'm sure he is also wanting what's best for that site, and if it happens to come up that we get a fabulous commercial venture for that, I, I would think that Mr. Roof will be amenable to working with us on that also, so. Uh, thank you, counsel. Items twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five with some creative reading, I think we could do the three of those together.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welper?
All right, I'll take all three.
Okay.
Uh, number three is a motion to instruct Leisure Services Director to prepare specifications bid document, et cetera, on the fiscal year 2014 Danes Complex Lighting Project. Number twenty-four is a motion to instruct the Public Works Director to prepare specifications bid document, et cetera, and that's the purchase of one 2014 Parks Truck with chip box. And number twenty-five is a motion to instruct the Waste Management Service Superintendent to prepare plan specifications from a contract, et cetera, on no-name creek interceptor sewer contract number eight four nine. Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five at this point? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file specifications bid document, et cetera, on twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. Second.
Uh, and that's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Very good, the motion's carry.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution setting the date of hearing and bid opening as November fourth, 2013, and instruct the city clerk to publish notice of specifications, specifications, bid document, et cetera, and taking of bids. That's on twenty-three. Uh, we are setting the bid opening on November eighteen on number twenty-four, and the bid opening of November twelfth on number twenty-five. Second.
Very good. Uh, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, the motion's carry. Thank you, counsel, and, and thank you, uh, those of you in the audience tonight. It's, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business. It's time for oral presentations, and if anyone in the audience tonight would like to address mayor or counsel, now is the time to do so. Please step to the microphone and give us your full name and address, and, uh, please limit, limit your comments to three minutes.
Jim Jam on two two four Birch, I got a question. Last week, we were going to buy property on Jefferson for four hundred thousand, another one for eighty-seven thousand, now we're going to invest another forty thousand dollars into a sportsplex to accommodate the sportsplex, which it wasn't supposed to cost the taxpayer a dollar. Where's this money coming from?
The, it's all bond money, Mr. Chapman.
Where's, how, how?
And tip money, but, uh, I mean, the, the, these have been items that have been in the works for a long time. You know, we have all, we've never said that we weren't going to provide property for the sportsplex. That's always been part of the deal, was that property would be supplied for the sportsplex and the parking areas to surround it.
And how do we get a return on our money?
We, we, we don't, but we, we will, we will enjoy a sportsplex that will be a great addition to the Cedar Valley and to Waterloo.
Yeah, no, not, not everybody can belong like Mr. Jones, get number one.
Okay.
Pass, so.
They have senior rates.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Bill Camaro, five twenty-six, Home Park Boulevard, Waterloo, Iowa. I'm here tonight to talk about the dog issue. Uh, I've had a, I've been involved in this thing quite a bit, you know, last several weeks since all this come up, and particularly because I'm a pit bull owner and a shih-tzu owner. And the only difference between my pit bull and my shih-tzu is if my pit bull bites you, why, you're going to put some iodine and a Band-Aid on it and forget about it, and if my pit bull bites you, you're going to go to Allen Hospital for ER. And I don't want that. That's not the kind of a dog that I want. And I've had a lot of contact with people, I've probably had contact with at least forty people over the past couple of weeks that's got pit bulls, and they're all in the same shape that I'm in, that I don't want a dog that's going to be aggressive or bite somebody. My grandchildren come to my house, and friends come to my house, and I don't want a dog that's going to be a dangerous dog, but a lot of people are concerned out there, so that's basically how I got involved in this, and I, I think I found some interesting statistics, and, uh, one of them is, is, is your own police report, and, uh, I got this, and I think our police department should be commended and give a Medal of Honor just for the fact that they serve, because in two thousand and twelve, they answered seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight situations they addressed. That's amazing. Now, out of that, there was sixteen dog bites. Now, that was an increase of two hundred and twenty percent, so that does tell me something's happening. Why, why is this all going up? Now, also, if we take what your, your folks are saying, that there's been twenty-five bites in the last three months, let's project that to a hundred, and if you want to take that, and what is that to the total population of dogs? I would venture to say, and I don't think there's anybody who's going to disagree with me, that there, in your jurisdiction here, there's probably ten thousand dogs, if the truth was known. And based on that figure, if we're looking at dog bites, that equals point six 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 seven, dog bites. Now, if we take it with your fears on pit bulls, there was eight pit bulls, and I don't know how they determine pit bulls, just like that question was asked, but let's assume that they are purebred pit bulls. If we take that and project it, that's point two one three 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 pit bull bites. So, but, is there a problem? Yes, there is, because there's been victims, so that makes it a problem, and that, unfortunately, we've taken the Cedar Bend Humane Society out of the picture, and now it's our problem as a, as a city, because we've taken over animal control. I think the only thing you need to do at this point to put this whole thing to rest and all these people that are all bent out of shape about this, this dog situation, which all you got to do is go out to the dog park and talk to these people, which I have, is right here's your, your ordinance. I come down here and I got this from you. Cost me five bucks to get this thing, but I wanted your ordinance that you were operating on. And if I read this correctly, it says City of Waterloo, and it says two thousand and four. Now, I don't know if that's correct or not, but that's what it says, November of two thousand and four on these documents. Here's Iowa, one version of the Iowa Dog Animal Control Law. Here's the other version of the Iowa Animal Control Law, and it talks about cities and counties and stuff in this, in these two things. Also have the copy of the presentation that you got last week from your people, which I think is a good presentation, and I think they got some good stuff in there. But the point being is, where are you going to draw the line here, and when are you going to stop? You can make this document, it's already twenty pages, because it's animal control, not just dog control, it's animal control. You can double the size of this, if that's what you want to do, put a lot of things in here, but it's so what at this point? I think what you need to do, and I'll give you these to use if you want them, so you don't have to even reproduce them, is hand these to Mr. Walsh over there and make these into a legal form. That's going to be the key to this whole thing.
Bill, and I, I don't, I'm going to.
Then, then give it to, put it out.
Okay.
Repass it.
And Bill, thank you.
I know you're going to tell me to sit down, I know you're going to tell me to shut up, I already know that. I've been talking as fast as I can. I already know you don't want me to stand up here and talk, I understand that, so.
But actually, neither.
All I'm saying is, I want to be a part. The only person so far that hasn't shut me off and let me talk is Councilman Schmitz. When I talk to him, he gives me his time, and he don't limit it, and I appreciate, and thank you for your indulgence when I come and talk to you. I appreciate that.
Okay, and I wasn't going to say either one of those things, Bill. I, actually, I was going to tell you, thank you for the information, and that's exactly what we're doing, is accepting copies and suggestions, et cetera, from our citizens, which have been numerous, and many of them have been used in that document that, that we passed out two weeks ago now, so I, I appreciate your efforts, and I appreciate what you've done, and this is the first time you've come to talk to us, and I am not trying to cut you off. That wasn't what I was going to say at all. Mr. Harrod? And by the way, if you have extra copies of those, Bill, we'd love to have them. Randy?
Randy Harrod, one eleven Highland. Uh, the length of time it's taken to develop Randy Harrod, 111 Highland. The length of time it's taken to develop this new legislation does seem overly long, and I think you guys agree with that, too. We should all keep in mind that in the past, as an example, comparison thing here, that city council passed a resolution requested by the Iowa Attorney General, that is, that those who are legally licensed to carry a firearm be barred from carrying on city property. Not all agreed that this was constitutional or met Iowa requirements. It was contentious to say, at least. And yet, that was passed, and if I remember correctly, in a single session, at most maybe two. And it was...we're talking about pretty serious stuff at that time. Here we have an issue which has gone on for about six weeks. Other actions recorded by police are much higher in numbers. Bill mentioned some of those, I see, such as aggravated assaults, but I cannot remember that they have taken as much time of the city council as this has taken. It is interesting that the people of the community are not being asked to contribute. And I realize you've gotten things in, but there is no public venue for the people to come and talk. We get these three minutes, but you know as well as I, we can't talk about this stuff in three minutes. To finding a solution, we want to find a solution to this issue. However, the information being offered could be considered as opening more questions than are being answered. Sandy and them have done great work, but there's a lot of questions still that are coming up. For example, my area, all right? Under certain circumstances, dogs and owners will be ordered to attend obedience training. But that doesn't define what type. There are several different types of canine obedience training. Working with dogs which have aggressive challenges is especially area of training. When such dogs are assigned to that training by a legal jurisdiction, a legal city, a different level and complexity of training is required. The city should provide to the trainer a history of the animal and the training and training goal desired by the city, which is likely different...going to be different for each dog-owner combination. They're not the same. Each one is absolutely unique. The city should also supply the liability insurance or guarantee of the same. I realize that the person with the dog is going to be the one that's going to pay, but the trainer should not be looking at, do I collect from the person? Should I collect from the city? It should come from the city. City should take care of that. The trainer should provide the dog student assessment on the initial class to determine the advisability to proceed with training. Some dogs aren't going to be trained, not because the dog's necessarily bad, but because the owner is just not competent to be able to handle this kind of thing. And there's no sense wasting anybody's time. With the continuation of training, a per-session report on a progress should be provided by the trainer to the city. And at the completion of the course, a summary of the results should be provided. However, due to the fact that the degree of success of this kind of training is truly dependent on both the dog and the handler-owner, success of meeting goals of the city certainly can't be guaranteed at all. Now, I'm sure that the city council members, such as Council...I'll mention two. Councilman Schmidt, Councilperson Cole, they both have strong opinions about this stuff, whether they listen to me or not. They have opinions and questions on this issue, but little has been forthcoming from the council about this. People have asked what your opinions are. There hasn't been very...there's been very little on this kind of area. And I'm also sure that many members of the community have valuable information to contribute. I know a number of trainers. There's probably about five that can do this kind of training in this county. But I'm not sure they're going to be interested in doing it. But I have found that there is no way for them to actually contribute in an open public venue. Coming and talking to council members is great. You know, we can go sit down in the corner and talk about this. Don't mean anything. It means a public venue where people can come into...I realize this is long, drawn-out discussions, and you're going to hear people talk, that you're going to repeat each other and all. It doesn't make any difference. This is a highly emotional issue to the people here in the city. So since there is no real public venue set up for the public to contribute to this kind of thing, what I'm suggesting is that the public contribute anyway, that the public come down here and take advantage of these little three-minute pieces. Next week, the week after, the week after that, if you've got an opinion and you've got value, and like I say, last week now, I had a friend come from our neighborhood who is also a dog trainer, and he is excellent at what he does. He's very, very good, deals with Shih Tzu training and with police dogs, things of that type. I don't know that he'll ever come back. There's no way to contribute. So I'm suggesting is that the citizens come down here, take part in this three-minute piece, and that the council members get out. If you don't like what we say, tell us. We don't care. But contribute, get out and say something.
Thanks, Randy.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Don Page, Waterloo, of course, 3316 Park Ridge Road. In fact, I've been for the last 63 of my 82 years, I've called Waterloo my home. Kind of proud of Waterloo, too. Waterloo's a pretty darn good city when it's under good management. I want to...I'm going to talk about taxes, but before I get there, I want to congratulate Mayor Buck Clark and I want to congratulate the city of Waterloo. Mayor Clark was appointed the president of the Iowa League of Mayors. And I think it's an honor. It shows the rest of the state understands what leadership is and what he has provided and what he can provide. And I think it gives a leg up for the city, too, because he is on the inside more of what's going on around the rest of the state and some of the cities. And I think it's an advantage to us. But I want to get to taxes and if I go over my time, then I'll be back next month to finish it up, so that...
Well, I've been allotting just a couple more minutes, Don, so I'll maybe a couple.
Because I'm going to talk about taxes, and I think that Waterloo kind of reminds me of a saying my dad used to use. I didn't understand how much intelligence he had. He had quite a bit. Little town 75 miles west of here, I was in high school and I was doing some training, getting ready for the Golden Gloves. And I had a problem with something and he said, and he'd used it before, he said, "You know, with each adversity, there's a CD equivalent benefit." And I said, "What does that mean?" He says, "It means if you get knocked on your butt, you learn something from it," you know? And I think that this is kind of reminiscent of Waterloo. They have been knocked on their butt. There's no doubt about it. And if you start looking at what's happened to John Deere in the last...or to the city of Waterloo, 6,000 or 7,000 at John Deere gone, Rast Packing Company is closed, Chamberlains is closed, Titus, Waterloo Industries, Hinson, Carnation Dairy, Meany Casket, all kinds of them. Old saying we used to use with Meany Casket, "Don't put your loved ones in any old basket. Put them in a Meany Casket." But they didn't advertise it that way, you know? But I like to say that Waterloo is tough and they're resilient. And they're resilient, particularly now because they've got...Buck's got a team that works with him. He's got a team. Those council members that work with him are doing admirable job, and I want to compliment the team he's put together and the work they're doing. The...they've got a proactive leadership and a proactive administration working at it. Now, about eight or nine years ago, Blackhawk County got themselves in a bad way. They had a majority on the supervisors that were a reactive type group and they were against taxes. They had a lot of them that campaigned, they're going to cut taxes, going to eliminate taxes and that even...some of them would...probably didn't even pay their own taxes once in a while. I don't know. And I guess that...I wouldn't mention any names, but lean on others is probably what they were doing, just lean on others. And 380, I would understand that Waterloo, Iowa was the last city of this size in the country that got an interstate connection. Now, this goes back a long time because we had a representative in Congress that was notorious. And he was called the watchdog of the US Treasury. He voted against everything, everything. And this area got the results of that because nobody would support anything that this particular congressman would do. He wasn't a team player. He was just an aguiner. We got a lot of aguiners around, you know? They don't have any positive things to bring up, but they got the aguiners in there. Now, I wouldn't mention any names on that, but I'd just say that was gross mismanagement. That's all I would put it that way. Gross mismanagement.
Don, you're working on almost six minutes. So if you can kind of...maybe you should schedule to come back next month and kind of wrap it up a little bit, if you would.
I'll put it this way, Buck, that you and those people that are working with you are doing a tremendous job. And like the League of Mayors, you got to be a mayor to be on that job. And I hope in 2014 that you are leading the city along that line. Thank you.
Don, thank you very much for your kind words. Is there anyone else that would like to address mayor or counsel? Yes, sir.
I'm Jerry Boyd, 1203 Independence Avenue, Highland Park. First off, I'd like to welcome you to the neighborhood, Mayor Buck. You put a sign out across the street from my house a while ago.
Thank you.
But anyway, I was up here when you folks was talking about putting in Martin Luther King Boulevard and how good it was going to be for, you know, keeping the traffic to minimal on Independence Avenue and this and that and the other. Well, ever since the highway's been done over there on Martin Luther King Boulevard, all your semis and your cement trucks run on Independence Avenue. And they've got the street all busted up. You live up there now. You can see it.
Yeah.
I was just wondering why you done that. We spent all that money for that road and it's not even used. I was going to come better prepared, but I forgot to make my notes.
Jerry, you know what? I think you got your message across pretty good.
I got a list of trucks and semis and...
Well, you know, it's a little ironic that you're coming and talking about that because the conversation that I just had last week with our engineer was about this exactly thing about truck traffic on Independence and Idaho particularly.
Oh, yeah.
We've got an issue with truck traffic on those two streets. We are trying to figure out why they're doing that, what's driving them to that. There's always a possibility of embargoing streets. We don't like to do that if we don't have to. But it's not that your comments are falling on deaf ears and we have just had that conversation. So
It's wonderful.
We don't have a solution yet, but we're aware of the issue. We're aware of the problem. I don't want the streets torn up, but I also don't want trucks in those residential areas either. So we're looking at trying to figure out why they're doing it and what the fix is for it.
Was there anything said to Benton's Concrete up there about running Independence with them heavy trucks?
We haven't said anything to any of the trucking companies yet. We're trying to figure out why they're doing it.
I think it's about time you do something there because they're up and down through there. I couldn't even begin to count the trucks every day. I don't work anymore. I just lay around and watch. Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Jerry. Is there anyone else?
Motion received and filed. Oral comments adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.